Good evening. Now we have some meeting minutes to approve that would be from our main ninth, developed in sixteen regularly scheduled council meeting. We have many additions or corrections. Need a motion to approve those minutes. This motion on the floor from Gina, can you get a second? Second by Stephanie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Agenda this evening, we have any additions or corrections to your agenda, Scott?
We have a couple additions. Julie, I need to, um, we work on the street banners and I believe you're helping with that. Um, the street banners are in place or we have everything established for overall, for all the street banners. I put this number in front of you, it's four thousand nine hundred, so I'm skipping ahead, I'd like to add that to the agenda, then I'll explain it. So let's put street banners, we'll put street banners down.
Oh, you can get one, one thing off right away, you can't do it, huh?
Yeah, we'll throw the street banners if it's okay with you guys, uh, down on the bottom toward the, underneath the, uh, golf course on sale liquor.
And then I'd like to also add the rental ordinance. There's a couple parts to that, so I'll just leave my rental ordinance at this time.
Okay, we'll throw that down below the street banners. The last item on our agenda will be, any other additions or corrections?
Yeah, he doesn't have on here the, uh, building permits, so we must add those.
Building permits. We will take care of that right after the rental ordinance.
Yep.
Any other additions or corrections? If not, we'll need a motion to accept the agenda this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor from Don, can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, first item on the agenda, uh, we may end up skipping.
Skip over any of them, yeah.
We're waiting for, uh, our city engineer, so let's go down to, uh, Peers Community Meeting Update and that's our comprehensive plan, meeting update, Scott.
Yes, so just I wanted to publicly announce that June eighth is when we decided to, um, so once again, June eighth, we will be having a community meeting, it'll be at, at, at seven o'clock at the Peers Library, Peers Healy High School Library. Um, I do plan to advertise with the record on such this week or after this week. Um, so there's gonna be more details there, we are posting it, um, to the extent of what we can, what we have for city services and we're gonna post around town things like that, so. June eighth, community.
Yeah, hopefully we get, uh, good community participation, this is, uh, this is our future plan, so the more info we can get from the public, so the council knows how we wanna proceed with, uh, with the future of our city is gonna be really important, so hopefully we get a good turnout for that. Seven o'clock. Uh, Scott Hedlund from SEH is here, City Engineer, uh, we'll go back up to the first item on the agenda. Scott, do you have the time or do you want to, uh, right now or do you wanna wait a minute or?
It's up to you.
It's up to you, if you're ready to roll, we'll roll.
Okay.
Bobby here?
Bob's not here. Okay. This is regarding our two thousand sixteen, uh, Edward Street, Third Avenue Southeast construction, pro-construction project.
So in your packets, you should have a copy of the plans, uh, so what, what I'd be looking for tonight, I'll quick go over these, but would be a resolution, the next step in the process would be to approve the plans and authorize me to advertise for bids for you and then maybe bid it up and bring back the bid tabulation and you can decide at that point if you wanna move forward with the project or what, you know, after that, so. Um, so yeah, the scope of the project as, as discussed before is basically Edward Street from Park Avenue down to the Fourth Avenue Southeast and then the two little blocks of Third Avenue Southeast from Capstner to Old Street. And on Edward Street, basically we're keeping curb and gutter everywhere other than in the intersection of Third, we're redoing that and redoing the the valley gutters that are on, uh, Edward across Third.
We need new pet ramps there too.
And then we're, we are installing new pet ramps, um, at that intersection, that's the only one that we are, up there to, uh, park, the plan there, Bob and I have discussed all this stuff, Bob will travel up, is when, when the county does park, that would be the time that we do that intersection up there with the county. And then with the, uh, see for us the school project, we did the ramps down and then on Far South End, so there would just be this area here. And then, so with this, with the Edward Street, the plan again, keep the curbs, we're gonna reclaim the batuminus, we're gonna grind it up, mix it with the gravel below and then we'll, uh, peel out, uh, three to three and a half inches of, of the aggregate to make room for the new batuminus. Um, on Third, that's more of a traditional reconstruct because we're adding curb and gutter to that one and then we're slightly widening the road. That's a twenty-six foot wide, uh, face-to-face curve, roll it on, on, uh, Third. So what they would do there is they'd come in, cut that out, cut it down to grade and then, uh, we're putting in some storm sewer, that's slightly different from, from feasibility report. Instead of having storm sewer at the, uh, Edward Street and Third Avenue intersection, we're gonna have some over at Old Street. So there are some standing water issues over there, so this would've dressed that, that issue would connect to an existing, uh, catch basin over here, uh, just to the north and east of that Oak Street.
One of the B I ones.
Yep, yeah, so we actually have to replace that structure with a little bit different one to, to be able to connect into it. We did look at storm sewer in this intersection in a lot more detail, it just, to discuss it with Bob and it just doesn't work with the way everything's sitting here as far as our only place to connect would be over at the Capstner intersection and the grades are minimal, this is all directly connected to the Trunk Highway twenty-five system. I mean, all this drainage was not, and, uh, to go into that system, so. The thought would be is, is that we talked about in twenty, thirty years, if and when this gets reconstructed, to look at a more comprehensive storm sewer system at that time, because right now it's basically a resurfacing job is what it, what we're doing. So anyway, but we are gonna replace the valley gutters there. So we got the storm sewer there, we really have no utility work that's like sewer water utility, the rip saw stuff, that's a part of this plan. They may do something with the, the service to the lumber, lumberyard there and, uh, so we'll just coordinate with them when the road's ripped up to get that done, if, if may be. Yeah, so after they cut, cut the road out, put in the, the storm sewer there, the material that they have to remove on Edward Street, we're gonna make room for the batuminus, we actually have them use it on, here on Third to build the base back up, so. That's material that they have to haul away. And, uh, yeah, so I guess, being as how there isn't a lot of deep excavation, um, Bob and I discussed, we're just gonna have them, the plan is to have them put both lifts of batuminus in this year. Not, not give it a year, normally if we're doing deep stuff, we'll give it a year in case there's any settlements or things, but unless anyone has any strong opinions on that, I think that'd be fine.
I think with just, uh, yeah, shallow subcut there.
This has been here for whatever, fifty years or something on Edward, not much, and then this storm, like you said, is really shallow, so it should be fine. So yeah, so I mean, that's, that's basically the long and short of it. But on Edward, just, just to remind, I mean, the, the curbs aren't perfect, like that brand new roads, so there may be some standing water in spots.
Right, and there's a couple spots along the way that we are gonna spot.
Yep, yeah, that's a good point, there are some, Bob had gone through and we worked with him just on identifying some kind of spot. Removing ways.
Real close, right after Gene Poser's driveway and Bob and I drove it all in, I think there's like three spots for sure.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, they're pretty deteriorated, so we might as well just.
And it could grow a little bit, but I mean, this, you know, we got a spot here, a spot here, there's some.
There'll be some change.
At the intersections there, but, I mean, it's all a unit price stuff.
Right.
We'll, we'll monitor that, I have some extra quantity in there in case we need to go even beyond once a year.
What was the engineer's estimate, like two fifty-five or?
Yeah, with that, with, that was the feasibility estimate.
Yeah.
Keeping the same contingencies and everything, I'm a little higher than that, but I'll recalculate everything once we get the bids, so. So if we've, we've had favorable bids so far, I mean, especially on the asphalt.
We approved this tonight and then when can we go to, when, when will you advertise there, how long will we take bids?
Right, it's, it's three weeks that we would advertise, so if you approve tonight the, the resolution that's in front of you, um, we would get it in the paper this weekend and then we'll start the clock ticking. Uh, my plan would be to open bids on June twenty-first.
You do that here then?
Yep, we would do that here and get public opening. And, uh, one o'clock, I gotta talk with Scott, make sure, uh, make sure that works for, for you guys.
It's Tuesday the twenty-first.
That one? That one was all I was thinking.
That one, you or I, or one of us should be here.
And then the plan would be to bring it to the council for award consideration at your second meeting in June, could, could start after the fourth then.
Okay, so now we need to approve the resolution, uh, approve the resolution, approving plans, back then ordering advertising for bids. Can we get a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Resolution on the floor by Donnie, can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Geez, the mayor's getting easy on the clerk, didn't make her read it.
I will.
Chandler class.
She was ready coming up.
Thanks Scott.
Yeah, thank you Scott.
And, uh, if you have a little more to know, in a few.
Right at the date, yep.
Pretty good, Scott, you're very good.
Yeah.
Get this signed away, I should say, if you were.
You can just send it to me.
I just want a copy for my record as well, so. That's good. Uh, just kind of an FYI for the council, um, we have a, uh, E D A meeting, uh, May twenty-fifth, that's at five o'clock, Donnie will be here at City Hall. Uh, next item on the agenda is our gambling permit request and that is for a raffle for Rouse and Hills and I believe that's gonna be held at Red's Out.
Yes, Red's Out. September eighth.
September eighth. Uh, we will need a motion to have that approved.
I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion to, a motion on gambling.
And I'll second it.
Motion on the floor by Mike and second by Stephanie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. And just kind of as an FYI reminder, uh, to the public, um, these permits do require city council approval. Uh, you can't just bring in the application and expect our city administrator to sign it at the last minute, um, it just doesn't work like that, so. Takes, um, council approval to, uh, to get these done, so. We have a park shelter request and that is for the Legion or is that Legion Auxiliary?
Auxiliary.
Auxiliary.
Okay, and I think we donate that park every year to this dummy.
Correct.
One of the shelters, I should say, and that is, uh, to do, to do, to do, July fourteenth?
Thursday.
It's open. Yep, it's a, it's a Thursday, I knew it.
I can check, but I'm pretty sure.
It looks like the auxiliary or they put it on for the, for the Harding Place, the villa and St. Cloud VA daycare, is what they put it on for.
Every year she comes for it.
Yeah.
Um, ask.
We donate that to the park. So. Yeah.
We'll make a motion that we donate the park shelter to Legion Auxiliary Club for their annual.
Veterans picnic.
Veterans picnic on Thursday, July fourteenth, that.
There's a motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Donnie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We do have the resolution, um, coming up, uh, on the next item and that is through our E D A, uh, revolving loan funds. It is resolution zero five two three twenty sixteen dash one and Gina, do you have a copy of that? I will have Gina with you, everybody understands what this is about.
Whereas the Peers City Council has given it necessary to provide city's economic development funds to assist the central health in demolition of two existing structures that have passed their useful life within the central business district. Whereas the central health must complete the city's economic development funding application for financial assistance in the demolition of two existing structures. Whereas the central health must follow the guidelines given the city's elec, economic development policy and committee once followed the requirements for the loan would be forgiven. Now therefore it be resolved by the city council that the city of Peers continues to preserve further rolls, further growth within the city limits by use the city's economic development revolving loan funds. Be it further resolved that the city council authorizes the city clerk to attest and effect the city seal adopted this twenty-third day of May, of May two thousand sixteen, five and record this loan.
Per the reading of the resolution, we give a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie, get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Stephanie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have whether licenses approvals we need to get done and I think the way we'll do this, um, so they're kinda mixed up in here, we'll go with the on-sale, Sunday off-sale patio. I'll just read those few off and we can approve those and we'll come back and take care of the rest of them based on what their status is. Uh, we have Patrick's Bar and Grill, that would be on sale, Sunday off-sale and patio. We have Brickyard Bar and Grill on sale, Sunday off-sale patio and we have Bootleggers Bar, which would be on sale, Sunday off-sale patio. Can we get a motion to approve those, uh, licenses?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion on the floor by Gina, can we get a second?
Can I have a question first?
Oh, absolutely, Stephanie, what do you got?
Did Bootleggers apply for a patio or do they do the?
I don't know.
Do they have, like, these guys, they say, put their fence up?
Correct, she applied for, she filled out the application for the patio, I talked to her about that. Um, as of now, she wanted to have the application in place, so that if she does decide to do, she'll just owe us the fee of the square footage.
Okay.
Um, but that will all go under review with plenty of zoning, et cetera, uh, but she filled out the application and turned it in, so I was kinda.
We can take and approve that.
Correct, so technically she filled out the application, okay, application, so she.
She can have it, but she still.
She doesn't have to do the work if she doesn't want.
Correct.
Okay.
She can get the permanent, if she decides to do it, she does it, if she doesn't.
As far as she doesn't move forward, she has to pay the fee then of our, of our fixed fees for it.
Okay.
The size of the patio.
And that's, I, I just wanted to know because I didn't.
Okay.
Okay, can I answer my question? Okay, now go ahead.
Very good, there was a motion on the floor to approve those for, can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Stephanie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, next we have a couple of temporaries, well, actually one temporary and that's Saint Joseph's Church and that would be their one-day temporary on-sale license and I believe that's for their church bazaar.
Yep.
Uh, can we get a motion to have that approved?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion on the floor by Donnie, can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, we have Oktoberfest, um, and I believe this is typically for the Lions, um, that is a one-day temporary on-sale. We will need a motion to have that approved.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Mike, get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stephanie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have the golf course and that's our three-two on-sale Sunday license. We need a motion to have that approved.
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion on the floor by Donnie, can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Gina, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, and we also have Lloyd's Liquor and that is for their off-sale license.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, Stephanie?
Second.
Mike, second, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously and we also have Legion Ballpark and that is their on-sale license, we need a motion to have that approved. Motion on the floor by Gina, second by.
I'll second it.
Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. And we need the Peers Ballroom, uh, that is for their three-two, um, Sunday license.
On sale.
I know, he's on sale.
Three-two on sale, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stephanie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Street banners.
All right, going back to that.
Yep.
Now you've.
So, um, as this started, as I started to discuss before, um, the quote from display sales and this has been a process. Bob with Carrie and other members of the committee have been setting up what we want our street banners to be and I think most of us have seen them already popping on. So the total for all the street banners and, um, the flag, which is the Navy flag, there's seventeen of those. You can actually just look on here instead of going through all that, but, um, look on your quotes that I put in front of you, you can see the quantity of all the flags that would be on each hallway through town, the total amount for everything is four thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, so we would be looking for a motion to move forward with the street banners that were just displayed in front of these along with, um, getting those ordered.
Anybody have any questions about the banners, you guys like them?
I looked at them as the process was going and I think they're, I think they're.
Nice, yeah.
I, I, I like them, does anybody not like them or anybody need to do something different with them, right?
To make sure, um, everyone's aware to, with the Pierce School logo and information on there, that's been approved by, by the school along with the events that happen throughout town, that's been to go, that's been communicated with, to the Pierce Commercial Club as well.
And that they show as black and it's actually gonna be blue?
It's a Navy blue, it's, it's a printer color. Black.
It's a Navy blue.
It's a Navy blue, it's, the color printer, I guess it's just not as. Yeah, but as far as just.
Plague is red, white and blue on the page.
Yeah. I don't know why those came up, so they're, I just copied them off their pictures, originals are blue.
Can we get a motion to approve the order of the banners?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion on the floor by Donnie, can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously and this is through display sales.
Correct.
Nesbit Avenue South.
No, we should get some length, life length out of these flags, because they are gonna be coated with something, so. The other ones that we have have, the ones that are all, um, get pretty beat up, beat up and dingy looking, so.
Rental ordinance.
All right, so there's actually gonna be three parts to this. I had to work with Tom extensively today on just kinda getting a few details worked out with this, but, so, as of last meeting on the ninth, we had a public hearing with our rental ordinance, so it's the same rental ordinance, now it's just the process of doing the publication, doing the resolution and, um, ordering the ordinance, so. In there, in the handouts that I handed out, um, Terry, you should have some too, there's gonna be ordinance number, that's twenty-sixteen dash two oh one and it's gonna be a total, I think, fourteen pages, that is the ordinance as a whole and that at the end of the very last page. Just stating that we're doing this ordinance. So that is the first step, the second step.
I mean Gina doesn't have to read the whole thing?
I think she should pass it.
She starts now about nine thirty.
So in keeping in mind, this is chapter, this is all in chapter six and it's the rental ordinance, rental housing maintenance regulation licensing. It was about half of the size, but once we implemented everything, it took about a year and a half, everything is in here now and it's in chapter.
Five and six?
Chapter six, part five.
Okay, chapter six, part five, okay. Um, so what did Tom want us to officially do first?
I mean. We have to, what we have to do is actually adopt the amended ordinance as of today, so that's gonna be the very first one that was, it's the thick one of fourteen pages, so. At the top it says ordinance number twenty sixteen dash zero one, so that's the, the first step of this.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have to go into, the first one would actually be the, um, ordinance relating to rental housing maintenance, um, the summary publication?
Wait.
Nope, that's the next step. So the big packet is what we wanna do is we just wanna accept this amendment to our ordinance.
Um, so that is ordinance amending, part five of chapter six and titled ordinance relating to the rental housing maintenance regulation and licensing. This ordinance number two thousand sixteen dash zero one. I think we've all been through this enough to have a good understanding and, and know what's in it, um, so if the council wants to move forward with this ordinance, we will need to start the process, so, uh, final process, I should say, and that is adopting the ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
There's a motion on the floor by Donnie and second by Mike, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
All right, the next step is gonna be the summary of publication. So this is what we're gonna send on the paper to run for X amount of days.
Okay, Gina, you wanna just, uh, go through this quick?
Whereas on May twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, the city council for the city of Peers appealed the text from part five, chapter six of the Peers City Ordinance Regarding Rental Housing Maintenance Regulation and Licensing and replaced it in its entirety with new regulations regarding rental housing maintenance regulation and licensing, whereas the city of Peers desires to publish the ordinance as summary publication. There, therefore, it is hereby resolved. Number one, the city council reviewed the proposed summary publication and finds that the summary of the ordinance clearly informs the public of the intent and facts of the order and ordinance. Number two, the city of Peers directs the city clerk to publish the ordinance by summary publication adopted this twenty-third day of May, two thousand sixteen, I hold up.
Okay, and we will take that vote, we, we give a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution.
That was actually the resolution for.
The other one.
Yep, so the summary is summary of publication, um.
It says.
No, it's this first.
Resolution, summary of, yes.
It's this first big one that we put off on the side.
So we got that one though.
You hit, you hit the backside of the fourteen pages.
So the summary of publication is the one that's gonna be shared.
Oh, I didn't.
It's the order. Front page. This is what we're seeing in most places.
Oh, okay, yeah, I had these three pages separate from the rest of it, so.
That's the one she's gotta read, she's used to reading though.
Okay, so we can just go through it and you've already heard this one, so we can go through and make a motion on that. This one. This one is done. Exactly, so we've got this one here that she just read.
The one in the right hand is the one we did.
Is done, this one is one she's gotta read, so we can.
Well, that's what I just said. Said that one.
Okay, sure.
We have the City of Peers Ordinance two thousand sixteen, ordinance relating to rental housing maintenance regu, regulation licensing summary publication. We have the city of Pierce ordinance two thousand sixteen, ordinance relating to rental housing maintenance regu- regulation, licensing, summary and publication. Go ahead Gina.
The city of Pierce has approved an ordinance amending part five, where it after six relating to rental housing maintenance regulation and licensing within the city of Pierce. The ordinance one sets forth the purpose of rental housing ordinance, two defines the terms associated with the ordinance, three requires registration of rental units, four requires inspections and indes- investigations of rental units, five requires prohibited conduct on licenses premises, six sets forth responsibilities of owners and occupants, seven provides space occupancy and use standards, eight sets forth minimum standards for equipment and facilities, and nine prescribed enforcement and penalties for violation of the ordinance. This, this publication is a summary of part five of chapter six relating to rental housing maintenance regulation and licensing. The full text of the ordinance is available for inspection by any person during regular office hours at this office, the city administrator of the city of Pierce in Minnesota. This ordinance was adopted by the city council of Pierce on May twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, and shall be effective upon publication.
The council has heard the reading of the ordinance related to rental housing maintenance regulation and licensing, summary publication.
I make a motion to adopt it.
There's a motion on the floor by Mike to adopt, can you get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously. Did Tom say whether this was the new standard policy for going in and doing ordinance changes? Because this is the first time we've ever had to go through a summary publication process.
Um, I guess, you know, this is the first ordinance that I've ever changed since I've been here, um, but as far as doing a publication of the paper, we usually do publications.
Yeah.
Um.
Maybe because it affects so many people since it's.
I think just because it's a, it's an amendment of ordinance.
We've done amendments, many kinds of amendments.
Yeah, um, and all we're, all we're really doing is actually just bringing it to the council and accepting it rather than just sending it to the paper.
Yeah, okay. So we've already heard the, uh, reading of the resolution from Gina authorizing the summary publication of the amendment of chapter five, um, part five of chapter six, ordinance relating to rental housing maintenance, regulating license, regulation and licensing. We will need a motion to have that approved.
We did that, now with me and Mike.
Uh, we didn't take a full vote, so we will have to go, uh, back and take a full vote.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor by Donnie.
Second by me.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously. All opposed. Well, building progress.
So we have six of them tonight. We'll start with his Farmers' Merchants Bank, been looking at just adding a fence around their, uh, garbage dumpster. Uh, that's been Saint Joseph's Church, Harold Meyer has signed off because it'd be a taller structure around it. That's number one. Uh, number two is Don Piney, uh, he's adding a thirty-nine inch wide by eight inches deep and, uh, ninety-four inches tall. For a sign, pretty good. It's gonna replace the one that.
It's on top.
The little one that he's got now.
Off the doorway of the bar.
That one. This, this patio should be pointing right across, as you can see here. The next one is the, the portable sign across the street here for Thrifty White, uh, that will be located either right there or down by the Jane Linnkey Veterinary Clinic.
That's the commercial club.
That's the commercial club sign that says the Rock and Roll Stroll and everything on it. Uh, the next one is for the city of Pierce for the temporary sign locations for the Farmer's Market, run, uh, May through October. Following one, and the next one is Jason Zaploski, and he's been having some trouble with some concrete at his house, and he's just replacing for the second time a five foot by twenty foot piece. Apparently however they built the house, that part keeps sinking away, so they dug it up and put new soil or whatever, and they poured a five foot by twenty foot slab.
It was already done.
It was existing.
It was already there, right. We're running it through here. And the last one is, uh, uh, James Duke Deeterly, uh, and that is for a ten by twelve deck, uh, for on his house, goes between his house and the garage. So setbacks wide, there's no problem.
What's the address on that?
Any of that. Uh, two twenty-seven Edward Street South.
Key corner from Long.
Mitch Nelson's old house.
Yeah.
That's why I do it as, uh, who I choose every permission, but anyway, that's that. And that is all six of them, and all six have been approved by planning and ordinance.
Do you guys, uh, have any questions or issues regarding the permits? Permit applications, I should say.
I would make a motion to, uh, grant the permits.
There's a motion on the floor by Mike, can you get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gina. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, department reports, uh, I know Bob's not here this evening. Uh, Eric, did you have anything?
Just a copy of my monthly report for the last two months for UAS, I didn't get it over.
Thank you.
You won.
I like you.
Sir.
Neither doesn't deserve, I don't know, whichever you want to say.
Hard to say.
My three report numbers are average, uh, grad- grad- graduations Friday, of course, so me and Jason are both working for Grad Bash. Uh, healthy living graduation of Holy Trinity fifth graders is Wednesday at twelve thirty, during an acanthine demonstration along with Sherrod Flarsen, just to be present for our first day, healthy choices and living. The last two weeks, I spent about eighteen to twenty hours over at Pioneer Elementary, con- making contact with every kindergarten, first, second and third grader. Completed that today, me and Michelle Ferguson, one of the social workers, so, we're around all the young kids that's completed.
Nice.
Other than that, I'm excited for school at the end.
Yeah. I'll bet you there's a couple handfuls of teachers that are too.
I imagine.
Yeah.
I've been invited to, uh, they've asked me to attend a school board meeting Wednesday night, so I'm gonna be attending a meeting there Wednesday night. Just wanna go over, I don't, I'm, I'm really not sure, when I'm bringing the stats, what we've done in the last school year there, just to see exactly what's going on, and if I make questions from there, I'll definitely.
How close did you keep track of your time over there?
Hours are tough, because right now the LATG system's not keeping the hours correct, so I've got the calls to date. It's a fifty-seven, fifty-seven calls for the school year, and they're, they're, I mean, you're, you're going from some major founties that started there, you know, of course, things are happening, everybody's been brought to attention by the mental workers or social workers, so the case starts there, and.
Yeah.
I mean, several cases last week, I put in seven hours just in, just in certain cases, so.
Well, I know you were a trainer thing here a couple of months or few months back, actually, and I've leaked that for a couple of days worth of work over at the school, so. So make sure we're trying to compile good information, so, or is accurate if you can, I know it's impossible, but, so, you know, finish off the contract year this year, and all kind of where the city and the school stand as far as the dollar amount that we entered into services with, so, it's kind of nice to have that information.
No comment, I guess. I, I enjoy it, whatever. I'll just see how the meeting goes Wednesday, I really don't know what to expect right now. George invited me, 'cause there's some concerns, not by him, but by other people, so I'll just, I can't bring the information I have.
Do you want me to come to the meeting?
No, I think right now it's, they invited me, and, um.
Well, I don't care if I'm invited or not.
If I, if I need to be, if I need to be a firecracker, I'll be a firecracker, 'cause I'm prepared for the meeting, so, if, if there's concerns, I'll start with my police commission first, you two from there, and I'll report to you and figure out, maybe it's just they just want accountability to see what, what's actually what I've done over there. If that's the case, great, but if there's concerns, then I'll bring them to everybody else's attention from there.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Thanks Eric.
Daniel?
We gotta just leave a chair out here.
I'm over the weekend on its way, and it's, looks like it's gonna rain. Um, pretty much well-prepared, staffed and everything, but, uh, I'd like to hire Travis Tyson to, uh, fill in for days, my other employees want to help and stuff.
Okay.
Daniel's, um, he's off to work a couple Sundays a month, and that's kind of where I'm short, it's just on the Sunday afternoon shift.
Okay.
So just a minimal fill-in on, uh, on Sundays is basically what I'm looking for, and he is willing to work himself.
Okay.
It's Carrie's husband, so.
I make a motion that we hire Travis. To, to fill whatever Daniel needs.
Very well.
Fill in shifts.
I'll second.
There's a motion on the floor from Mike, and seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously. But we're ready.
I'm ready.
We're ready anyway.
Good reports, I heard from, uh, the golfers in the area, that the course is in good shape and looking good, and.
Couple of trees still need to come down, they're sorely in the way, months and a half.
That's.
If you use the tree, you're not gonna swing.
Well, it's not me, I'm always on milk.
It's my club. Anything else?
Hopefully.
Let's cross the fingers that things go well this weekend.
Yeah.
I'll have it packed up there. Thank you.
Thanks Danny.
Scotty?
Nothing.
Nothing from the administration. Nobody else has anything, I guess we will wrap it up. Make a turn.
I make motion to adjourn.
Stephanie makes a motion to adjourn, can you get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously.
Why is it because I was taking me?